Welcome to our Tuesday, October 21st, uh, council meeting. Uh, we'll go ahead and call the, uh, meeting in order. Uh, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll make it, my man.
Lou Haas, Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? Clark of reading the revisions. All opposed? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries to suspend the rules, Clark of reading the revisions.
To the policy agenda for substituted item four A, ordinance to amend municipal facilities pertaining to the rental fees for the A.J. Highway Sports Complex. To the consent agenda, we're adding five line, resolution authorized payment to cover emergency medical services, and submission of the 2026 emergency medical services operating on grant application to the district's department of health, and adding five C registration for any injury in touch with this sponsorship agreement with right of Biloxi Economic Development Foundation for President's Avenue.
Chair, entertain a motion to amend the budget.
I'll move.
Or amend the agenda.
I'll move that, too.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Nail, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, excuse my voice, I had band practice last night, too many, too many over at my keys, so, but, uh, welcome everyone to our second October meeting, we got one more to go, a lot of smiling faces, right? Jamie, you can help me do our first order of business as the longevity awards.
All right, when I call?
I'd be on.
When I call your name, please kindly come up to the front. Augustus Lamy Jr., fire inspector, fire department, five years of service.
Good boy.
John Lambert, mechanical plumbing inspector, community development department, ten years of service.
I thought that was shot in the head.
Robert Stansberry, commercial building co-inspector, community development, ten years of service. Great photo?
Get him from the other group.
Gary Creel?
There, here.
All right. Back up behind him.
This is perfect, yes.
All right, everybody move this way. A bit more. Okay. You don't need to do that.
Look, there ain't a chance you seen around this guy.
All right. All right, one, two, three.
John, you need to stand on the box.
Yeah. That almost concludes my report, but I do want to, uh, remind everybody, we have the second, uh, evening of the, uh, uh, cemetery tour, and that's between five and seven, I think they had one Sunday at two, but, uh, if you have a chance to get out to the cemetery and see some very interesting, uh, displays and, and performances, that'd be great. I think that this could conclude my report. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we're gonna move on to council reports, but before we get, uh, begin that, I just want to note that Councilman Shoemaker, uh, is not here today, he had a very important out-of-town, uh, conference, um, he, uh, reiterated that he'll be back in the seat, uh, at our next meeting. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and open up, uh, council reports, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, um, Christmas decorations, Saturday, Christmas preps. Uh, Ms. Miller, Ms. Kay, you here? It looked like it had a good turnout, I couldn't make it, um, I got hurt Friday, you know, laid up, but, uh, we got a lot more to do, and it looked like, um, we're gonna have to have another, another weekend or so to get the Christmas decorations ready. Um, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Nail went out and helped out, appreciate y'all getting out there. Um, cemetery cleanup for the, uh, cemetery tours, uh, the guys did a great job, like always, volunteering their time. Um, this time of the year, you know, we hear about a lot of stuff with the council and showing our support, but we, a lot of stuff we don't get to go to, because we don't know about it, but I don't mean we don't want to get out and support the things, um, like the, the three firemen that we didn't, you know, we didn't know anything about, or I didn't, um, I would've went. Um, Mr. Jamie, Mr. Jamie Lee, he's always first up. Can you give us an update on the, on the signs? I know it's been about a while, so hopefully you say you got them.
Good afternoon, council. Um, I did speak with the sign shop briefly about the signs, and they do have one of the prototype, the first one, half of it done, and, you know, due, due to some other things that they needed to jump on, and he said, you know, as soon as they get the chance, they will get that second sign, or that second half, um, built, fabricated, and then as soon as that happens, we're gonna get it installed. It will be at O'Reilly Park, that will be the first one that we install, and once, once we get it up and get it installed, then hopefully be a little quicker making the ones at the facilities that we do need.
Are they gonna be out of wood, is that what they gonna be, or, or metal?
They're out of metal, but they're gonna go probably on wooden four-by-fours, kind of something similar, the older signs were on.
Right.
The sign itself will be made out of metal.
Okay. What about the, any update on the playground equipment, point cadet?
No, sir, no update at this time.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Marshall?
Come back to me.
Come back to me.
Come back to you, okay? Mr. Nail?
Come back to me.
All right, Mr. Creel?
Come back to me.
Mr. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, feel, come back to me, please.
All right, Mr. Marshall?
Before I call for a vote for a new council president. Uh, Reverend Lowes, will you come forward, do you have announcement to make about the, uh, cleanup, please, sir? Reverend Lowes?
Good evening, council president, mayor, city council. I come before you, uh, as District One Commissioner for the Harrison County Beautification Commission, uh, asking for y'all to please help us with our leaders against litter, the city of Biloxi has helped us in the past, and we're asking for your help again this year, gathering teams and, uh, gathering cleanup points to pick up in the city of Biloxi, which will be, the date's Friday, November fourteenth, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, the city, the I was actually hosting us this year, Biloxi hosted last year, but the I was hosting the event, so once we finish the cleanup around eleven AM, we'll meet at the, uh, Julius Toronto Pavilion at eleven AM, uh, for lunch, and, uh, just some, some good camaraderie and fellowship. So, November fourteenth at eight AM, if you put that on your calendar, we can get some teams together to clean up the city of Biloxi, just show that we want a cleaner, greener Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, in reference to the beautification committee, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Jamie Creel for re-establishing the, uh, our beautification committee, for those of you who are wondering, what do, what does the beautification committee do, uh, that should give you an example right there. Um, we normally in Biloxi like to be the forward runners, the beginners and the starters, and all-out shoveling, but, uh, Harrison County got a leg up on us right now, but we're gonna come back strong with our beautification committee. Uh, Mr. Jamie, Parks? The gates were, uh, here and back, have you, where we end with that?
We located it, they are at Hiller Park, and we are looking at the options of the installation. Last it was told to me that the original installation was incorrect, that's why they kept getting damaged and removed, so we're looking at what it may take to get those installed correctly, but we do have the actual other side of the rolling gate at the Hiller Park Armory Building.
Okay. Any ideas on the timeframe for anything we do to fix that porch at the little house there, it's, it's really gonna be a threat to the city, uh, someone gets hurt on that porch.
Right, and, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at just blocking it off right now until we can get the resources available to fix it.
Okay, the caution tape is not gonna work, any ideas of another way of doing that?
Maybe put up a temporary gate or something, um...
We'll do some barricades up around that, and, uh, until we're able to get the funding and get the materials to be able to go in and fix it, so, I'll get with him, and get with Public Works, and then we'll put some barricades around that to see.
Okay. I also want to thank you for the effort you've been doing to, uh, keep it clean over there. Uh, I want to thank the city of Biloxi for, uh, the police department for your efforts to, for your patrols, uh, I know you two are working together with that, that's, you know, it's, it's getting a lot, a lot better, we're not there a hundred percent, but we are a lot better, and it takes a lot of working together, I, I appreciate that.
Yes.
As far as the, uh, Mr. CAO, you all right?
Yeah, sure, but I appreciate you checking on me.
All right, all right, all right, all right. Call you to the front of the class in a minute, but we good. Uh, the signs that I requested for the dogs, do not, for the dogs not getting in the park, I appreciate you getting the right park this time, I appreciate the exercise, I, I, I appreciate all your responses, every time I've called you or text you about something, I'm here to tell you that, anyone listening, I, I give praise where praises due, uh, you've been on the job, appreciate that. Uh, the mayor was able to come out to our senior, East Biloxi has a group called the, uh, East Biloxi Seniors, it's a group that gets together every third Thursday, of senior citizens, um, and they have just lunch, and the mayor was, uh, able to come into our last, uh, our last, uh, luncheon, and he was able to come and, uh, bless the people with their two-dollar bills for their birthdays, and I want to thank him, thank him on behalf of, uh, the East Biloxi Seniors for your participation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall, Mr. Nail.
Uh, I want to thank, uh, engineering for finishing the sidewalk fast, I pop the elementary school, and, um, it looks like, um, Southern Avenue and, and Camellia Street's gonna get back to normal soon, they're, they're out there working hard, and, um, the park, um, Hiller Park, uh, is there any way that we can, um, those softball fields, if I got some volunteer people to take those over, do we have permission to give them back in shape? It'd be volunteers doing it.
Let's, let's kind of meet out there, and we'll bring some of your potential volunteers, and what you're thinking about doing, but also, you know, the, the dog park, uh, all on the tennis courts, so let's kind of look at both of those opportunities.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, and again, from a usage standpoint, uh, and it's a building that's kind of, uh, we're, you know, we're cleaning out, out there, but let's, uh, let's get a plan together.
I talked to...
Maybe at one point time we go out there.
I talked to the girls softball coach, the, the coaches' girls softball, and they said they'd love to get those back in shape again.
Yeah. Well, let's make a plan, and we'll do that.
And then, uh, over by the playground, the, the, you know, the one up front, uh, there's, they need two park benches there for the parents to sit in to watch the kids, the picnic tables are too far away, and, um, if we can get, if we can't get them, I'd like to donate the wood to build them myself. I pay for it.
Let me jump in, we've got a number on, on, uh, Oak Street that were donated from Margaritaville, we just had to make a base, I mean, all aluminum, uh, uh, benches, I mean, that's about, we got about twenty of those, ready to, to place in various places.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and then the more picnic tables down by the water.
Yeah. I don't have any picnic tables, but we got, we got benches, aluminum benches. Yeah.
That's it. I've closed my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nail, Mr. Creel.
Yes, sir, good afternoon. Uh, let's see, first of all, um, Nick, uh, thank you to you and your team of, uh, firemen that showed up this morning, raised money for MDA with the boot, uh, great, great cause, and, uh, did a fine job, very respectful, and, uh, looked very professional out there, so thank you for, for organizing that there. Um, hey, Jamie, real quick, I know we had discussed, um, this previously, but just to bring some awareness to it, the P B footballs on, on, uh, Tuesday and Saturday, I think, uh, six PM they're using five fields, seven PM they're using four fields, I know previously we haven't had any police, fire, or security, it's just the nine-one-one dispatch if anything happens out there, I know we had one occasion where there was an occurrence, but do we have anything going forward to provide, uh, security and/or police in, in the event?
We are, we are looking at having a s- security guard out there during the events.
Okay.
We are investigating that, and hopefully, you know, with the season almost over, can't guarantee it'll be, this year, we're looking at trying to get it through the last couple of weeks, but definitely in the plans for next year to have that presence there.
Yeah, those playoffs, they get even more southern, Rick, but, but, uh, another thing real quick, um, just to pick your mind and think about, the big soccer fields with no lights that are, that are locked, spoke to a group of disc golfers that are interested in possibly acquiring the, uh, equipment, and possibly doing a disc golf course out there on the big soccer fields that they could utilize during the day, lights wouldn't be needed, so, um, if it's no cost other than unlocking it, and it'd be different than the, um, than the adult soccer players that were out there, just, uh, this is, you know, the disc golf and it, it's open area, so, if, if, think about that and see if, if maybe we'd be open to, uh, possibly...
I would say, um, have the organizer or whatever, want to get together and meet and look at their, look at their plan, and we can talk it over with administration, and we can do...
Been pretty successful at Hiller, I, I...
Yes, sir. And actually, that's where we were talking, he, they had just played Hiller, and they actually used underneath the overpass as well, so then when I mentioned the, uh, the big soccer fields, he pulled out his phone, he already had it mapped out, he had two, two or three board members all together, so, it's something that they'd be viable to, yeah.
Good use.
And I don't know how much the goals cost, or the course, whatever, but he said that they would be interested in get, finding sponsors to, uh, to, um, accommodate the, uh, equipment.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. Um, so, thanks to Jeremy Hard, he's the president of the, um, Anchors Landing HOA, invited me out to speak to their group, um, last week, and it was, it was a good meeting night, uh, good to meet those guys, and, uh, welcome them to Ward Four, it's a fairly new neighborhood out there, off of, uh, Camp Wilkes. Uh, we had a ward meeting last Tuesday, thanks to Rick, Walt Roadie, um, Jerry Creel, and, um, members of the council, uh, everyone, everyone, uh, that, that was in town showed up, so it was a good support, good meeting, um, Marcus Boudreaux was stopped, uh, was able to stop by and speak on, um, Biloxi schools and his, uh, stance on school choice, so it was a good informative meeting, the next one will be in December, and we'll talk about that soon. Um, cruising the coast, so, record number of cars this year, um, chief, if I could, I know last year, we, uh, spent in excess of two-hundred thousand in overtime, um, how, how did we, from what I understand, it was fewer citations, more cars, well, how do you attribute that to, uh, to, uh, this year as compared to last year?
Sure, so we, uh, didn't write as many tickets, we really concentrated on, uh, crimes that would have caused accidents or something like that, it's more what we looked at. We took our investigators and flexed their time, so they, they actually worked the event, not on overtime, but just regular, regular duties, which causes some problems, they'll have felony cases that we worked on for a few days, but they're back on now. Uh, I think our, two-hundred thousand you're talking about, I think, was citywide, the two-hundred thou, uh, ninety-five thousand's what it cost us, but that's not, I mean, that's just an estimate right now. Time sheets were finished Sunday, uh, they were probably turned in Monday morning, so within the next couple of days, we'll have a, a much better number. That would've saved, just from the police department, about sixteen thousand from last year, if memory serves me right.
Okay.
So overall, I guess, probably still be close to two-hundred thousand if you're looking through the whole city.
So you're able to get creative in order to, uh, have enforcement visible and, and the necessary numbers needed to, uh, to police the event?
We did, and we just, uh, another, uh, uh, reason why the citations weren't up as much is that we had, uh, didn't bring our traffic unit in when we usually do, we, we skipped a, a whole cycle and let them come in, we're on, uh, any act, it, it costs them that, we were able to work through those.
Perfect, perfect, thank you, great job, I think everyone, no one can complain about the, uh, the event, I think it was a huge success, and, uh, so we appreciate your efforts, I know it's tiresome and it's tedious, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creel, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, does the city have any plans for the semi-quinsentennial? I had to practice saying that, that's, uh, that's all the nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, that's next July, just food for thought, I know it's on your radar, Mayor.
Final review, right now.
Attaboy, spell semi-quinsentennial. All right. Thank you, I just, just make a note of that somewhere down the line, uh, and is the... you, you still talking? Okay. Also, as the mayor mentioned, the annual cemetery tour, you can, if you missed it Sunday, you can catch it tonight from five to seven, if you go, bring a flashlight, because, uh, it's six-thirty, it's six-fifteen, it's pretty dark now, and you're out in the cemetery, and you don't want to fall, but it's, it's worth seeing, particularly if you're interested in Biloxi personalities or city history. Uh, is there, are we still pursuing solutions for the homeless, or still looking at strategies?
Right, we, we've attended, uh, pretty much coast-wide and, and county, uh, I had a first gathering was, uh, at the, uh, Harrison County Courthouse with a couple supervisors, the sheriff and, and, uh, Chris and a couple others, I was there. So, the idea is to, uh, look where our weaknesses are and, uh, see whether there's a solution in or outside, uh, city limits, but, uh, that is in motion right now, I think there's some, uh, Kevin, uh, Belcher and, and Joel Carter, a number was from, a number of them from the state level, and I think, uh, Kevin has got some minutes, uh, on what was done and when I, when our next meeting will be.
All right, thank you. Um, next thought is the Broadwater property, are there obstacles that prevent the property from being cleaned up at this point? I know they had, uh, bush hogged quite a bit of it, particularly along the roads, I'm thinking primarily of Iris, uh, street where it crosses the railroad tracks, the road curves there, and visibility's an issue, and...
I'll get, Louis, Louis Elias is, uh, is sort of their property manager, and he had, he had conveyed to me they were gonna start on Iris and get Iris cleaned up, that hasn't happened yet, but I'll invite him to...
That's probably, I'm just thinking, the more overgrown it gets as that vegetation increases, the more folks were likely to have moved back to the property, that, that would be accurate, chief?
I would think so, but in their defense, uh, they're probably waiting for the weather to cool off and some of that vegetation to tie down.
Okay.
Plastically, that's probably a, an issue.
Okay. But I hadn't seen any, you know, expense of any kind of activity, but it's been down a little bit from my...
It has been down, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And, uh, just a request in the future, I know we spread the, uh, credit card expenses on the minutes monthly, i- if we could include just a, a reason for the expenditure, whether it's a conference or whatever, usually we just get a list of people. Um, also, Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Bernard Cuz-Sanamaw, uh, just a local guy, supported Biloxi High School Athletics for years, I recently passed, so I'll make that motion at the end when we adjourn, thank you, that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Um, I got a few things. First, Christie, uh, this is Belmont Gardens, uh, if I can get an update, I know, uh, it's kind of been elevated, uh, because of the precarious flooding, uh, but can you kind of give me an idea, the scope of, is there a timetable, is there anything in motion, uh, to, to address it, uh, in, in a reasonable amount of time, or are we still in the assessment mode?
Well, um, we've already assessed it, we've had our contractor come out and give us a quote to fix it, um, I believe it's about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand to make the repair, uh, it's difficult because we gotta get behind those apartment buildings there. Right now, we don't have any funding available, it's at the top of the list, when we get our next round of, of our use tax funding, it will be top of this, top of the list, we'll get right on it, but we just don't know when that funding will come in.
Do you know when the use tax funding, is there a timeframe for that?
Usually it comes in any time between October and the end of the year.
Twice a year, twice a year, yeah.
Yeah, we get it twice a year, so it's, this is the timeframe that we get it, we just don't know when it shows up.
All right, and, and just for everybody watching, this is, uh, some drainage behind Belmont Gardens, uh, senior apartments, uh, there's quite a bit of, uh, stormwater runoff that comes, uh, in behind that channel, behind these homes, it's overflowing, and it's actually getting into the housing, uh, and they cannot occupy, uh, several of the, uh, of the apartments. Um, one other thing related, uh, this is to Reunion Place, and this is a minor compared to Reunion, or, uh, compared to Belmont, um, there was an issue with some, uh, flooding, uh, in the backyard eight-thirty-one, I think, uh, Reunion Place, has that been assessed yet, or we're still...
It has not, but I will, I will check on it.
All right, thank you, Christie, appreciate that. Um, and I'm just throwing this out there for also another note, um, near Belmont Gardens, uh, there's some development going on, but there, uh, seems to be some overgrowth, uh, real, uh, a lot of bushes in around, uh, a piece of parcel that's being developed, but it's causing, uh, some visibility concerns, uh, to some of the residents, if we can just put that on the radar to take a look at it, it's right at the entrance of Belmont Gardens, if we can just take a look at it, it wouldn't take that much, uh, probably Mr. Nail could take care of it in about five minutes, you know? Uh, anyhow, uh, let me move on to a couple of other issues, uh, I did also met with the, uh, HOA Association of Reunion Place, uh, this past week, uh, very spirited meeting, but we had some good information, uh, I appreciate, uh, one of the developers to an adjacent, uh, property, uh, being able to discuss, uh, what is actually going to happen right next to Reunion Place, uh, they're comfortable that, uh, that development will actually help, uh, some of their flooding and, and water runoff, uh, so that's a positive thing, and, uh, they really appreciated, uh, all the information, so we look forward to that going forward. Um, Grand Slam, Showstoppers, another tournament, baseball tournament, uh, Jamie, appreciate the information again, uh, councilmen members, you have this in your box, it's an in, event impact stu- study or summary, uh, somewhere around four-point-three million dollars in economic impact, including one-point-seven million in lodging, eight-hundred thousand in, uh, travel and transportation, nearly one million in food and beverage, and, uh, retail is guesstimated to be around six-hundred, uh, thousand impact. So, I, I know we have been very successful, every, every weekend, it seems like I ride by the facility, and it is packed with cars, and you can see the out-of-state, uh, license plates, uh, on there, so I, I know everybody's having a good time on the coast, and, uh, A.J. Highway Sports Plex is, uh, doing exactly what it, we intended it to do, so let's, let's keep that momentum. Mayor?
Let me follow up, too, uh, uh, Mr. President, you know, we had a meeting with them yesterday afternoon, and talking about what's on your plate today, about adjusting, you know, the, the pushes to get more revenues to offset the, the more, you know, more things we can accommodate, but, uh, I think they were, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie and, and Rick, too, I think they were favorable to the things that we're gonna do in order to make this thing sustainable and beneficial to everyone, they're interested in, in doing a bunch of tournaments between March and May, and, uh, so we'll be, uh, be creative in how we can accommodate that, that, uh, opportunity for business, they're, they're willing to expand, and they know that Biloxi is key to their hub, or it wants to be their hub, and, uh, we're gonna aim out a way, uh, for them, uh, to be successful, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that commitment. Um, item I on the, uh, agenda today, I just want to note, uh, this was a request by the Catholic Bishops, uh, Association to support a discounted rate, uh, they've, they're a Baba One C Corporation, they've always, uh, held an event... Item I on the agenda today, I just want to note, this was a request by the Catholic Bishops Association to support a discounted rate. They've, they're a Baba One C Corporation. They've always held an event to benefit the kids and the Catholic children and students. So I would ask my fellow council members if they would consider extending that to the Catholic Diocese in their request. Next is the Coast Attraction Association. They give an annual award. It's called the Don Jacobs Award for somebody who's contributed greatly to tourism. And this year's recipient, I found out today posthumously, is none other than Mr. Billy Creel. That's Jamie's father. So I do want to recognize that today. He's certainly a maverick, not just in the Tourism Association, but on the coast and throughout the state and throughout the region. Billy was involved almost in everything, from the Wooden Boat Show, Maritime Seafood Museum, cruising the coast. Certainly a maverick in the gaming industry. And I could go on and on. He was a general manager at the Hilton. He used to hold wrestling events in the ballrooms out there, and he knew all the wrestlers by first name. They knew him by first name. He was instrumental in bringing the Miss Mississippi or Miss Teen USA event to the coast. So it, you know, I've traveled with him to Vicksburg, to Natchez, to Jackson, you name it, to support and increase tourism awareness and economic awareness for the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And I'm going to tell one more story with the Miss, I'm going to try to be careful. And Linda will remember this. Linda Hornsby's in the audience, our executive director for the Mississippi Hotel and Lodging Association. We were, we put together a committee. Billy was on the committee. I think I was the president at that time of the association, and we were planning our annual Christmas celebration. I believe it was at Lee McConnell's place, if I remember. And Billy said, well, you know, do you have any money? You have any door prizes, all that kind of stuff? I mean, his attention to detail, especially when you were going to throw a party, was second to none. And then he was soliciting, he said, come on, Kenny, give me some ideas. We've got to be unique. We can't just go and, and it be stale or ho-hum. You've got to come up with some ideas. So I thought for a little bit, and I came up with this idea, if you've ever been to some of these youth dances, a shoe dance? Y'all ever been where they throw their shoe, and they got to match the shoe to the student? Maybe, maybe you haven't been associated with that. But I did a variety of that. I said, let's do a tie dance. And he's like, looked at me, what's a tie? What are you thinking of? And so you'll, I said, you'll see. So we all gathered, we, we kind of made some introductions, and then the music was starting up, and I said, okay, I need all the men on one side, all the women on the other side. And everybody accommodated my request, and I said, okay, guys, take your tie off and throw it in the middle of the dance floor. And so they took their tie off and threw it in the middle of the dance floor, and I said, ladies, you've got to go find the tie that matches the man that has that tie. And you heard some giggles and all that kind of stuff. And Billy, every woman that would hold up the tie and say, is this your tie? He would say yes, as my tie. So we had a good time, but I remember that like yesterday, and we had a great time. There may have been at least one divorce after that, but we still had a good time. But congratulations to your father. Real proud of that. All right, I got one last thing, and if you have been out on Highway 90, riding up along the coast, and as you near past Christian, you'll notice what we haven't seen in a long, long time, a long, long time, nearly a half decade, ostermen. Ostermen are out there harvesting those oysters. We haven't seen that in a long time, and there, there's sacks and sacks of oysters. They're thrilled. I see the posts on, on Facebook and Instagram, and they're going to work. That's all they want. It was an opportunity to get out there and work. So it warms my heart to see that. That is what our Mississippi Gulf Coast is about, and when we approach October in the winter, is to see those ostermen harvesting those oysters and being able to enjoy a plump raw oyster or grilled oyster. And with that, that'll conclude my report. We'll move on to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total time of 45 minutes. We've got a packed house today, so we're going to adhere to the three-minute rule. Usually I give a little leeway, but we're going to, when you hear the bell, that means your time's up. Respectfully, kind of end the conversation. We'll move on to the next speaker. When you raise your hand to be recognized, I'll try to single you out and ask you to come up. When you come up, you put your name and your address when you sign in, and you state it verbally, so the clerk can duly record your, your name and your address. So I'm going to start on my left, your right. Raise your hand to be recognized if you'd like to speak on this side of the room. That's your other right, sir. On this side of the room. Raise your hand to be recognized if you want to speak. Yes, sir.
I'm in. Sanne.
Sanne.
Good afternoon. Councilman, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, sir, I need you to state your name and address so she can recall.
My name is Jay Tomcray. I live at 14424 Big John Road, Biloxi, Mississippi, 39542. Councilman, Mr. Mayor, friends and neighbors, my name is Jay Tomcray. I am a lifelong resident of Big John Road, the subject road of the zoning ordinance before this board today. I, along with my friends and neighbors, are here in staunch opposition to the zoning amendment 24040-PC placed before this committee by Rita Smith, a resident of Austin, Texas, and a Mr. Dennis Stifle. I am here to urge and plead with this body to see that this amendment is struck down in its infancy. This council is supposed to adhere to eight factors whenever it is considering an amendment such as this, so I'd like to go through and present arguments for each of those factors. The first is, is it consistent with the city adopted plans that are applicable? According to information that we received as a community, there are no plans for any extreme variances within the area. Is this, is this zoning amendment required to address any mistake in the zoning plans that this city has? There has been no mistake reported on the record before this council. It has not been brought up before this council. Is it compatible with the, with existing proposed uses surrounding the subject land? And is it appropriate zoning for the district land? Currently, it is zoned as agricultural. There are agricultural means throughout the road that people use. There are farms. There are animal husbandry areas around the land that would not be consistent with this current zoning amendment. This, this development would deviate from any logical orderly development, development plans. The proposed amendment that would allow for this development would destroy the profile and character of the community. This amendment would encourage premature development. This amendment has already been submitted to this council with, with a already predetermined plan for what is going to be happen, or for what is going to happen to that lot. So that is already prematurely being developed. I would just like to conclude with saying that, you know, our highest court has said that we should really consider these amendments, because when the people move to these places, they have to take that into effect. In our land, we have built a community of solace and security around our friends and our neighbors. In an argument in both law and equity, we believe it is important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left, your right? Raise your hand to be recognized.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lyle Moran. I live at 14360 Big John Road in Biloxi. My property, 900 feet of my property and my mother's property matches up to the property that we're talking about. The backside of my property is extremely low. Property that they're going to try and build on is the same, same exact, you know? They're going to have to put in a lot of dirt. When they put in all this dirt, the water's going to flow to my property. It's already difficult to get back there now. If they do this, I can effectively just not use that property at all, just let it grow back up, because I'm not going to be able to do anything with it. My mother's 86 years old. If y'all allow this to go through, there's going to be dump trucks, there's going to be logging trucks, there's going to be bulldozers, there's going to be everything out there, and it's going to be out there for a good while, and it's going to make a tremendous amount of noise. And then they're going to begin to build the houses, which anybody knows, if you've been in a subdivision when you're building houses, all you hear are hammers and, and just, and saws and nail guns and all. You're going to force us to move, and then our value of our property is going to drop. You're going to put houses on 7,500 square, or 7,500 square feet of property, even if you take it to an RS10, it's still only 10,000 feet. Everybody out there, I'm on two and a half acres. My mother's on an acre and a half. Everybody out there is on at least one acre lots. I don't think anybody's on less than an acre out there. You let this development take place, you are totally changing up the way our community is. And there's nothing we can do about it, because not a single person in here is one of your constituents. We're in the county. Everybody else is in the city. There's a few part, there's a little bit, piece of Big John that's in the city, but not much at all. So their, their words aren't going to make any difference, really. It's not going to make you want to vote for Kenny the next time or not vote for Kenny the next time, you know? I really would wish you would reconsider this 7.5. Even if you brought it to an RS10, it's still too small for the amount of helms that are going to be put on this property in there. My property is R3. That is one house for three acres of land. I had to get a variance just to move on two and a half acres of land. Right next door to me, I'm going to have houses on a minimum of probably 10,000 square feet of land. And it's, it's going to totally change what our neighborhood looks like. And everybody on that road is, we're all relatives out there. It's, it's, it's the way it's always been. That property was started by the Crohn's, they were the first ones to get it, and most everybody out there is related to the Crohn's. I'm one of the few that's not.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Hornsby. I'm at 1167 Bayview Avenue, Biloxi, 39530. I am the executive director of Mississippi Hotel and Lodging Association, nonprofit organization established in 1930, serving as the voice of the lodging industry throughout the state of Mississippi. And we are members of the Mississippi Sound Coalition. In my 40 years in this capacity, we have not experienced any one singular incident which so negatively impacted tourism on the Mississippi Gulf Coast in such a concentrated time period as much as the unprecedented opening of the Bonny carry spillway in 2019. A total of 31 states border the Mississippi River lined with factories and industries who dumped their refuse, contaminants, protons, and pollutants into the river, which was emptied into our Mississippi Sound with the opening of the Bonny carry spillway. The Mississippi Gulf Coast cannot continue to be used as a dump. We in the lodging industry live by numbers. Year to date of May 2019, the Mississippi Gulf Coast was experiencing phenomenal growth at 10% in year-over-year occupancy and was poised for continued increases. The effects of the intrusion of the polluted, contaminated waters into the Mississippi Sound began on June 1st and continued through the end of August 2019. So instead of continued growth, our occupancy and RevPAR suffered declines as much as 47% during that period of time. The lodging industry and most of tourism generates over 85% of their annual revenue during those three months, which carries them through the entire year of the shoulder and off-season months. The phone stopped ringing, guests canceling their advance reservations, and/or guests who once here left, creating a vacuum of visitors in the peak tourism season in 2019 as a direct result of the opening of the spillway. To quote our mayor, keep quoting, "We cannot stress enough that the Mississippi Gulf Coast cannot afford for this to happen again." As I often tell people, and I will continue to tell them, there's only two reasons anybody does anything, because they want to or because they're required to. We would have hoped that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers would want to be a part of this solution, but they haven't been. We are respectfully requesting the Biloxi City Council to continue your participation in the Mississippi Sound Coalition with your leadership, vision, and commitment, and to hopefully serve as an example to convince other entities to step up as you have and do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hornsby. Anyone else on my left? We got the lady, lady right here. You'll be next, sir. Captain, you'll be after him.
Good afternoon. My name is Kira Schmidt, 6207 Herbie Road, which is a private road off of Big John. I am speaking on behalf of one of my relatives, Brad Fountain, who could not be here today. Brad has been in discussion regarding the rezoning with the Commissioner of the Mississippi Department of Agriculture and Commerce, Mr. Andy Gibson. Mr. Gibson is aware of the situation and has sent his letter of recommendation as he could not be here in person. I will be reading his recommendation on his behalf. Dear City of Biloxi, Board of Aldermen, thank you for your service to the City of Biloxi and its citizens. Recently, I had a conversation with Brad Fountain regarding his family farm in Biloxi. I understand that the board will be considering a zoning change that could affect his farm. I am respectfully asking you to consider the agricultural impact the zoning change could have, not only with respect to the land, but also to local food production. Thank you for your attention to these concerns, and thank you again for your service to the people. Sincerely, Andy Gibson. And I have copies if y'all would like his letter.
Thank you. All right, sir. You were next. You are next.
Good afternoon, councilman. Mayor, I'm there. My name is Ray Borries, and I reside at 15143 Big John Road. I live in the rural community on Big John Road, and I'm here today to respectfully oppose the proposed zoning change in our area from agricultural to RS7.5. One of the most compelling reasons to deny this project is simple. There's no proven demand. And the nearby subdivision of Emerald Lakes, located less than one-fourth mile from the proposed property on Hudson Cron Road, there are seven homes currently sitting on the market unsold. These homes are priced from $329,000 to $385,000, very much in line with the current housing market. These seven homes have been on the market for an average of 133 days. In addition, Emerald Lakes is in the process of Phase 3, adding 20-plus more homes. The current average time a home in Biloxi sits on the market is 40 days. All of this is current data from Thursday, October 16th, from the Realtors MLS. This fact raises important questions. If the homes already built are not selling, why should we waste more agricultural land in an area that was never intended to be medium density? Families who are invested in the peace and space of rural living are punished when the surrounding landscape is altered by poorly selling housing developments. Good planning matches development to actual market demand and to the character of the community. And that, my friends, is your job. Match development to actual market demand and to the character of the community. Since homes nearby are not selling, approving more is not responsible for growth. It is speculative development at its best that threatens the financial stability of the community. The fact that homes nearby remain unsold should be a red flag. It signals that demand does not exist in this area, that buyers do not find this location attractive for subdivision, and that approving more will only magnify the problem. We urge this commission, this council, to protect our rural community, safeguard property values, and bring unnecessary financial risks to both residents and the city. Please reject this zoning charge change until there is a clear demonstrated demand for such housing. We support growth, but request that zoning stay agricultural, one house per acre, to preserve our community's character. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Captain Louis Scrimetta. I live at 334 Lemoine Boulevard, Past Christian, Mississippi. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Ship Island Excursions. I believe you guys know our company. We provide passenger ferry service to Ship Island and Fort Massachusetts, part of Gulf Islands National Seashore. My grandfather founded the business in 1926. He started in Biloxi, just down the street at Walter's Oil Dock, where the Hard Rock Casino now sits. The company transports about 50,000 visitors a year to Ship Island. I also serve on the board of the Save Our Sound Coalition and the Mississippi Gulf Coast Attractions Association. In the early spring of 2019, the Mississippi River levels were predicted to rise to a flood stage in New Orleans. By the order of the U.S. Corps of Engineers, the Bonnie Carey spillway was opened for a total of 123 days. Polluted water from the spillway killed more than 90% of our oysters in Mississippi. Our shrimp landings were reduced by 50%. The 123-day opening of the spillway had a devastating effect on coast tourism due to the extensive beach closures. Tourists stayed away in groves. Fertilizer in the released river water caused an algae bloom that prompted the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality to close the sound for recreational use, which was perceived by visitors also as also a warning to stay off our beaches and stay out of our waters. The closure dramatically lowered visitation, which translated into lost business, less state and local tax revenue, and less work for thousands of workers in the tourism industry. Our business alone dropped by 30% that year. Business leaders, pardon me, the U.S. Corps of Engineers has the discretion to use alternative ways to manage the Mississippi River and to protect people and property from flooding while protecting the Mississippi Sound from further harm. We know there are ways to manage the Mississippi River differently to protect New Orleans and not destroy the Mississippi Sound. Business leaders and concerned citizens, both Republican and Democrat, came together and formed the Save Our Sound Coalition. The mission of the Mississippi Sound Coalition is to restore and protect the ecosystem of the Mississippi Sound estuary and the way of life and economies of coastal communities that depend on it, based on good science and fair public policy. We seek win-win solutions. Save Our Sound scientists have made great progress working with the Corps of Engineers over the past two years. Solutions are now being discussed that will protect New Orleans during periods of river flooding without adversely affecting the fragile ecology of the Mississippi Sound. The Corps has started reaching out to us instead of resisting us. Now is the time to keep pressure on and not leave the field of play. I implore that the council continue the...
Time's up.
...of the Save Our Sound.
Time's up. Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Your right. Yes, sir.
Mike Cavano, 134 St. Jude. I'm here for the Seashore Manor conditional use permit for short-term rentals. Not necessarily to speak against the conditional use permit, but I guess we have some questions concerning the number of units available for both permits and conditional use. The way the... and you new city council members may not realize this, but the ordinance limiting to 75 the number of permits, it does not limit, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, it does not limit the conditional use. So what you have on your agenda is a 19-unit conditional approval. If there are not enough permits available, then they do not get all 19. Apparently, when this first came in front of the Planning Commission, there were just 13 permits available. And now, according to the latest statistics, there are 20, I believe, available. So they would get all 19 with one permit remaining that can be used. This seems like a fine point, but it's very important when somebody has a conditional use approval but cannot get a permit. So I think it would be helpful if the city would publish statistics on the number of conditional uses approved, the number of conditional uses that have a permitted unit, and then a number of permits available. So there's, you know, we're talking about two different things here, conditional use and a permitted use. So if we could get that data, then we'd know a little bit better how much, how many more we have to worry about in our neighborhoods and how many more units would be permitted. That's really all I had for this. Wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that, and if we could get some documentation on that, that would be great.
Anybody else on my left?
Morning. Good afternoon. My name is Joel Davis. I'm on the committee for the Christmas on the Avenue event that we're hoping to host here in the city. We want to line Howard Avenue, make it a beautiful event, make it a event where people will come from all over, by way of rail, car, however. We want to line Howard Avenue with Christmas trees and bring the holiday spirit back to Biloxi and the area. I'll be in the back if anyone has any questions. Part of the event, I will add this, we're planning on a... we're involving the Biloxi School District. They're going to be bringing in art from the student art, from all the art programs in the school, and we're going to be voting on the art, and that art piece is going to be the official logo of the event on the T-shirts. And we're having a parade, going to come down Howard Avenue, spectacular light show, giant igloo that is going to really bring a lot of people in. It's a really large igloo. It's got room for 300 people, or 100 people, I'm sorry. We're just really passionate about Christmas, especially here in Biloxi. We want to bring the holiday joy-infested environment back. Thank you.
Anyone else on my left? Your right. I'll move to my right, your left.
Good afternoon. My name is Cassie Borries Kilpak. I reside at 6237 Herbie Road, which is a private road off of Big John Road. I'm speaking today in opposition of the rezoning of the land on Big John Road. It's been mentioned that some of the citizens opposing this rezoning are misinformed, though we somehow think this development may bring apartments or Section 8 housing. I want to be clear, this is not the case. We are very much informed, we are very well-informed, and we fully understand what RS7.5 and RS10 zoning means and the real lasting impacts it can have on our community. At the planning meeting, environmental and flooding concerns were addressed with the statement that the project will adhere to the flood plan and ensure that runoff does not exceed pre-construction levels. But I do have to ask, is this the same kind of flood plan that was conducted for Emerald Lakes, where residents have dealt with years of flooding issues? Or is this the same flood plan that was done for Rivers Edge, where the first heavy rain brought several inches of water into multiple homes? You can understand, then, why we have hesitation and why our concerns are valid. No one truly realizes the devastation these projects caused until the damage has already been done. And once that happens, it's too late and cannot be undone. Emerald Lakes has been used repeatedly as a comparison point by both the Planning Commission and some of the council members. I have personally spoken to residents of that community. In fact, one is recently asked this morning. That resident asked me not to mention her name, but did say that her home has been flooded twice. She has also shared that since moving there, there has been a shooting, a drug raid, and even a gun raid, where machine guns were being manufactured and sold right next to where families are trying to raise their children. These are not rumors, these are not exaggerations, these are the lived experiences of residents and developments, just like the one being proposed. And they highlight exactly why we have every reason to be concerned. Another major concern is traffic. We have been told, and I quote, "That the levels will not pose a hazard to the community." But on what basis is that statement made? If each home has just two vehicles, RS7.5 zoning would roughly add 320 additional cars to the road. RS10 would add 256. How could anyone claim that this would not create a hazard on our small county road, one that was never designed for this kind of volume? Finally, I'd like to remind everyone here, while some of us do not live within the official city limits of Biloxi, our homes, families, and lives are still directly impacted by decisions made here today. Our voice matters, too. We are your neighbors, and we should be working together to preserve the safety, integrity, and rural character of this community, not divided by imaginary boundary lines. I ask you to please do not approve this rezoning, listen to the people who live here, learn from the mistakes made in other developments, protect this land and this community for future generations before the damage is irreversible. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Before I get started with my point, I would like everyone in the audience that is here against this zoning change on Big John Road to please raise your hand. My name is Mandy Cron. I live at 6311 Herbie Road, and I am here today to oppose the proposed zoning change from agricultural to RS7.5. I want to start by saying this isn't about anything against growth. It's about responsible growth, growth that strengthens our community instead of straining it. Right now, this proposed development would send its children not to Biloxi City Schools, as some of the council may think based on email responses I received, but they will go to Harrison County Schools. This means Biloxi would not see the impacts, the traffic, the infrastructure strain, the changes to our community landscape, and without actually investing in these resources those new families will depend on. So who will carry that burden? The county. The county schools do, and ultimately, our children do. I listened carefully when a Planning Commission member said, "The schools will adapt." But Creek Bend Elementary and Middle School, less than four years old, is already over capacity by over 400 students. How can they adapt? And let's talk about DeIverville High School. They are struggling to offer enough classes for their students right now. Imagine being a junior in high school, getting ready to graduate, and being told you can't take a required math class because there isn't a teacher available and there are no classroom spaces for you. This is not hypothetical. This happened to my nephew last year, and it's happened to my niece the year before that. Two students, two years in a row, both unable to take required classes to graduate because the school is brushed in at the seams. How is that responsible growth? How does that show planning and foresight? If Biloxi truly wants to grow, and I believe it can, then let's work the right way. Let's invest in new schools, new parks, new ball fields, and the infrastructure that supports families and keeps our community strong. Let's plan developments that add value to Biloxi, not push our problems off on the county and call it progress. Every child deserves a classroom, a teacher, and a safe place to play. Every resident deserves roads that can handle the traffic and schools that can handle the students. You, the council, have the power to insist on that kind of growth, thoughtful, sustainable, and fair. So I urge you, please vote no on this zoning change. Let's work together for a better plan that truly reflects Biloxi we all want to see and that one that grows smart, not just fast. Thank you.
Anyone else on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Sabrina Moran, 14360 Big John Road, Biloxi. Our house is also... I'm with the man whose house is... Our house is also, I'm with the man whose house is on the property line, but what I want to talk about today, Kenny told me that he was going for a R10, and that several other y'all have already decided to go for an R10, that y'all are going to vote for that. So does that mean y'all have already made the decision and whatever we're talking about does not mean anything to y'all?
This is not a question and answer.
Did you not tell me that, though, Kenny?
I did not.
Yes, you did, Kenny.
This is not a question or answer.
I hear, Kenny, you stood right here and you told me you're going for an R10, and you already have several other council members that are going to go with that, too.
This is not a question, this is not a question.
It doesn't matter if it's a question or answer, it's what you told me. I'm trying to be nice to y'all. I am a nice person, but tell the truth, please. All we want is to live out there on our property. Just consider that. Wayne, consider that. I know you've been, you've lived in DeIverville before. Consider what it does to our property. Please, y'all, think, don't listen to him, he wants to run for mayor next time. Thank you very much, and we were told that also. So y'all just think of us for once. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ryan Bradley. I'm the Executive Director of Mississippi Commercial Fisheries United. I want to thank each of you, you supported us a few weeks back with a resolution opposing the takeover, the private leasing of our oyster reefs. Can't thank you all enough for your support there. We've got some great trends with our oysters and our seafood in general is recovering, really thanks to the efforts of the City of Biloxi and their strong support for the Mississippi Sound Coalition. And so I just want to, you know, express our strong appreciation and support, the support from you guys, from the past council for the Sound Coalition. We came within a half a foot this past year from that spillway being opened again this year. And if it wouldn't have been for the efforts of that Sound Coalition, which is really all-stars working on that, community leaders working on that, we probably would have been right back in a situation where they just went ahead and opened up that spillway again this past year. So let's keep our, keep fighting, let's not take our foot off the gas just yet. We're a lot of good progress, and please keep the support for the Mississippi Sound Coalition, and thank you, City Biloxi.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Like to come up and speak?
Mayor Gillig, City Councilman. My name is Glenn Parker. I'm here with my wife Dorothy, live at 15039 Big John Road. And the people of this community, Big John Road respectfully ask for your support in keeping this property zoned as agricultural. I could write you a history book because I've lived there most all my life, gone working, but I want to tell you, if I can use your mind just a moment, paint you a picture of what I know from my childhood till now, that the problem here is the flooding two and a half miles north of that swamp that goes north, the four-liner up there, 67. That water is channeled between Big John and Hudson Cron, it funnels into that. You've got, in massive rains and hurricanes, you have a vortex of water, it's always been that way. That's why no one ever built on this property. So when that water gets to my great-grandpa's old place where that swamp turns, I'm talking with my hands so you'll understand. It turns, nothing can stop it, the road never did. No matter what you dig and build is not going to stop this water. The west side of Big John, the backside, if you build something there in dirt, it's going to cause the velocity of that water to come down that swamp even greater. The south side of those two transmission lines, there's like a 250,000-foot line, if you don't know what KV is, that's all right, we're not going there. And there's 110 next to it. Now, what I've seen on a plan was houses being built that can't build under the transmission line, right? It's a right-of-way with Mississippi power. Those houses on that south side, you're going to be in the swamp, and I want y'all to know that. All I can say is you better buy you some flood insurance. That hill that it makes up to where Mr. Big John Husley and his wife built a little bitty about a three or four thousand-foot, square-foot house. You know why they built it up? Because it was the most sensible place, they were of the mind, don't you ever build in a low place. Because that floods, it's been since, like I said, a child. Is that my bill?
That's your bill.
Well, there's where the history book stops. I wish you could, any of you and all of you could have visited that place, and I was there to show you what that's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else raise your hand to be recognized if you want to say a few words? Lady in the front here.
Good afternoon, guys. My husband and I have personally experienced a similar proposal.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I'd interrupt you.
Sorry, I'm at 15143 Big John Road.
Thank you.
Elaine Cron Borries.
Thank you.
My husband and I have personally experienced similar proposals in the past concerning property we own on the north end of Big John Road, a fourth of a mile from where this property is. Over the years, we've received three offers related to our 75 acres, one for apartments, two for subdivisions, one of them was for $2 million. One of the engineers on this property before us today, in partnership with a developer, was one of the offers. Out of respect for our community and its impact, we declined all offers. Could we have used the $2 million-plus dollars? Absolutely. My husband and I are not rich people. We are from the farmers of Big John Road who just live normal lives. I still work today at 68 years old. That's how much I love Big John Road and our commitment to save it. The proposal for RS 7.5 zoning was previously denied by the Planning Commission, as you know, on 10-2 of 25. A decision we believe reflects legitimate concern about the project's suitability. Even at an RS 10, that is, does not meet the characteristics of our community. There is not one house on Big John Road that is built on less than one acre. The 75 acres we have was sold and developed by my husband. Not one home on that property is under two acres. Everything else is over two acres that we built. It fits the community. The homes range from $400,000 to $800,000 homes. The gentleman that spoke that lives on the border of this, they have two $475,000 homes. This development is going to decrease the value of all of our homes that has put our hard-earned money into living there for hundreds of years. My great-grandfather's sixth generation settled that 198 years ago. This piece got out of the family and given to Ms. Rita through an inheritance who lives in Austin, Texas, and has no ties to Big John Road. But I don't want her to be left out. I'm a realtor. I'm working on the side, if this falls through for her, to try to find someone for her that is wanting that property. We thank you for your time today, and I please hope you listen to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Raise your hand to be recognized. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Chuck Stein. I live at 14391 Big John Road. I've lived there for 40 years, and I'm here in support of the 80 families that live on Big John north of this development. I've heard a lot of things going on, I've seen a lot of, you know, presentations and things, but what I'm here for tonight, today, is... There, I got it right here. Come on, Chuck, here we go. We have a living, thriving ecosystem at this piece of property in Illinois that has survived for hundreds of years. It's a thriving wildlife habitat. We have deer, we have eagles, we have ospreys, we have raccoons, opossums, anything you could think of. We also have five of the 10 amphibians that are on the endangered species list in Mississippi. And I know that the council's not required to have an environmental impact study, but I think the state requires, especially if it's bordered on three sides with these swamps... Uh-oh. I didn't do it. This property is bordered on three sides with a flood plain, and I know that the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality regulates this and can ask for an environmental impact assessment. Through the assessment, it can be determined whether or not a full environmental impact study is required. And like I said, for nothing else, it's a thriving wildlife habitat. The ecosystem out there is just unbelievable. That's why we live there. Every one of us here have the enjoyment of seeing all this wildlife, all this game, every day of our life. I wish y'all had the same opportunity that we had, because it is just unbelievable. I raised my family there. There's 80 families live on that prop, from this edge of this property north, and they want to put 73 homes on that 38 acres. The commission, Plaid Commission, two of the gentlemen there asked, would y'all compromise? You know, one acre? And he said, "No, we couldn't do it, I couldn't make enough money at it." So what I'm saying is, why would y'all let this guy do it just for money and disrupt this whole community that we've had for 200 years? Some of them, their families live there. So, you know, that's what we're asking for. Yeah, I would invite all of y'all to come out and look at the property. That's what we need to do. So I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Anyone else? Anyone else raise your hand to be recognized? Raise it high so I can see it, if you want to say something. Got one. Let's finish up on this side, over here on this side. Almost up. It's up. Just so everybody knows, our 45 minutes has expired, this will be the last speaker for public comments.
Hi. My name is Emma Peacock. I'm a Laurel resident, but I have property here at 6410 Crescent Shore Drive. And I really came today because I had asked to be on the agenda, and they said I'd just come and speak. So I am with Burrows Companies out of Laurel, and we sell chassis trucks to several of y'all throughout the city. And I'm moving here for definitely more great service for y'all. I have my card, I'll be glad to leave it. Anything I can do, I travel every morning from Laurel to here until my house is built. So I'm just offering extra service, so, thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, public comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Clerk would read item A.
Ordinance to amend municipal facilities pertaining to the rental fees for the A.J. Holloway Sports Complex.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Mr. Neal has seconded, this is a first reading. Move on to Resolution B.
Resolution to deny zoning my amendment to authorize a change in zoning from agricultural to RS 7.5 medium-density single-family residential for an unaddressed parcel fronting Big John Road.
I'll move it to item C. Do I have a second?
I'll make that second.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Note that this is now converted to a ordinance, and it is a first reading. Move on to policy agenda. Item C.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize an existing retreat facility to be utilized as a short-term rental for 1400 Beach Boulevard, 1408 Leggett Drive, and 136 Chalmers Drive.
Chair, entertain a motion.
I'd like to bring it up for discussion.
All right, moved by discussion by Mr. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, Mr. Gray.
I would like to, I don't mind granting this 17 for the Beach Boulevard, but I don't want to do the Leggett or the Chalmers.
You offering an amendment?
Amendment.
All right, we need you to state your amendment clearly.
I'd like to make amendment for, to remove the 1408 Leggett and the 136 Chalmers off of it.
All right, there's an amendment on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second, okay.
You've got it. Mr. Creel? All right, any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Gray, you have the floor.
I have none.
Mr. Creel?
No discussion. Yeah.
Mr. Tisdale?
We're talking about three structures totally, I think, Jerry, and Chalmers, on Chalmers Drive, two of the cottages are east of Chalmers.
Yes, sir.
And then the third structure basically has a number of units, is that 17 units or?
It has 17 units, yes, sir.
Okay, and I think, Wayne, you did not want to include those two structures east of Chalmers.
Right.
That be accurate?
Right.
Okay, Jerry, while we have you here, I know Mr. Kavanaugh was asking about conditional uses for short-term rentals. In this matter, this is RM 30 or 20, I think is the zoning, so it requires... In this matter, this is RM 30 or 20, I think, is this only, so it requires a conditional use.
That's correct.
And we had established a cap of 75 short-term rentals where conditional uses were required for RM 20 and RM 30 properties. And where are we currently as of this moment?
As of this morning, we have 51 that are obligated, 51 out of 75. So if the council votes to approve this, that would add 17 to that total.
Exactly. And I would assume that the difference there, it's a little larger than a figure we had heard previously, probably from permits not being removed, renewed. Would that be accurate?
Yes, sir. Actually, we're beginning to get some letters from people who are not renewing their license. They've chosen to not continue to be a short-term rental, and that's the explanation for why that number dropped so much.
Okay. But that cap of 75 applies only to the zones of RM 20 and RM 30 that require a conditional use for short-term rentals.
That's correct, yes.
All right, thank you. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
None.
Any other discussion by anyone? All right, we're going to vote on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? The amendment carries unanimous. Now we'll vote on the resolution as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next item.
Resolution appointing Susan Cain to the Biloxi Beautification Commission.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Gray. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Creel. Discussion, Mr. Gray.
Ms. Susan Cain couldn't be here today. She had another appointment she had to get to. I thank Jamie for bringing this back up. It's not been, I don't know what, 40 years since we've had a beautification meeting. And I'm excited to see what they're going to do, and hopefully we can help them get some money and get Biloxi looking beautiful again. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Creel?
I concur with what Mr. Gray said. That's a great choice.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes, question, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Will the administration have some sort of meeting when this commission is actively functioning to just explain the scope and the responsibility of their positions? They just need some sort of orientation. I'd hate to turn them all loose out there in the public without any sort of training and, you know...
Peter, answer that.
I think... Because I don't think I was alive when this was passed, but it requires four before they have a quorum. So right now, we're at three, and by the time we get the fourth, we will...
After my due.
I guess, sort of talk about what can be done and what needs to be done.
So basically, what I did with Ms. Bernich was I gave her a copy of the ordinance, so that way she can bring herself up to speed on what the ordinance actually says and what the scope of her responsibilities would be.
And I think we could look at, you know, Harrison County has this similar beautification-type committee. We could look into what they do and how they operate, what sort of recommendations they make, if they do quarterly or annual recommendations. We could look at that.
Yeah, and as the ordinance says, it says they come with a comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan identifies the scope of the project, the details of the project, the materials within the project, and possibly funding of the project. So hopefully with that comprehensive plan, it will all come to us with a one-stop shop.
I have an ordinance, Mr. Tisdale. I'll get your copy of it.
I think there are actually four ordinances. I mean, I've seen them. It's just, I just want the members of this commission to understand what they're responsible for so that they don't exceed the scope and really can be much more effective and efficient in their operation. That's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
None.
All right. Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Just before you move on to the next item, for all of you who are representing Big John Road, I just want to let you know, y'all are welcome to stay as long as you want, but the measure converted to an ordinance, it's a first reading. It'll be brought up for additional discussion at our next meeting. So it's, all the discussion is ended. There's no further action today until next week. But y'all are welcome to stay as long as you want. Next item.
Resolution appointing...
We're going to wait to... We'll wait till the room clears. Yes, Mr. Marshall?
I was going to sing a song, do a dance, but you ran the audience off. So I don't sit here.
We'll take requests from the remaining audience.
He knows how to clear a room.
We're ready.
All right.
Welcome back, Mr. Wall. I'm glad you called back in here.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Creel, if I took some of your audience away, but we'll go on to the next item.
Resolution appointing Vincent Creel to the Biloxi Beautification Commission.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Creel. Discussion, Mr. Tisdale.
I know he's interested. I know he's passionate, and I know the rest of us will say our prayers. Thank you.
Can we call him up, or do we want to?
Yeah. Come on up. Come on up.
Where is he? Come on up, Mr. Creel. I didn't see you back there.
You're out. I'm just waiting.
You look beautiful today. This is a good day for being on the beautification.
We have the votes up here, so ought to just leave.
I see.
Susan Cain was outside earlier. I think y'all just voted on her. And she asked me what this group was going to do. And I said, well, the biggest thing I've heard is that we just go by what's already in writing, what you have on your code of ordinances. And I think it's going to be something that's going to be exciting. I think there's a lot of fertile ground out there, and I think it's just a matter of bringing people together. So she said, well, how much money do we have? I said, you got no money, none at all. I said, but on authority? You have no authority. I said, the biggest thing is just bringing people together, raising awareness of what our city can be and should be, and doing it in a way to where everybody's happy. What do you think of that, huh?
I like it. I like it.
Spread the warmth and joy. Spread the warmth and joy.
Question?
Well, we don't know if they got any money in it. We had to go back, dig out 40 years ago, find the bank records.
I think there's some low-hanging fruit out there, and one of the things that we were able to do before Katrina was bring in a lot of businesses that worked on this, that would help adopt a median, and that would help bring in some new money and some new interest. And I think it's just a matter of channeling those forces to do the best good.
Yes, and I agree with that. I couldn't have said it better myself with the inclusion of someone with Susan's expertise and knowledge, Vincent's knowledge of the city and its underworkings, along with the passion of everyone else that'll be on this committee. I think it'll set a precedent for future members of this committee and keep it going in the right direction. So thank you for accepting the PAWS nomination.
It's an honor. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Creel?
Yes, Mr. Creel. Where would you start at? We have no money, no authority. Where would you start?
I think the biggest thing to do is... Susan said, well, how often do we meet? And I said, well, it's just like it says in the ordinance there. We said how often we're going to meet. So one of the things it asks you to do is look at the existing comprehensive beautification plan. So I don't know what kind of plans that there are, but I think one of the things that we would want to do is look at what the Harrison County Beautification Commission does. The other thing that we have to do is come together and see what some of the biggest complaints that people have about beautification. And I would think that one of the biggest things to look at is the high-profile areas. You're dealing with a number of jurisdictions here. Nobody wants to take control of that bridge over there. There's arguments about, well, who does the medians on the highway? Is it the county? Is it the city? Is it the state? I think by bringing some of those people together, everybody will know what the expectations are, everybody will know what the responsibilities are. And Marshall, you know as well as I do that a lot of it comes back to communication. And I think that once those lines of communication can be opened by a group that is not a threat, the group's not a threat because it has no authority, because it has no money. But once you open up those channels of communication on how we can make things better, you look at what the county's doing right now at I-110 and 90. You know, they're doing a lot of work down there. There's probably some things that could be done if somebody asks, say, M.Dot, hey, can we fix the median? Those are the biggest things, Marshall, where the group comes together, they talk about what they've heard, what their neighbors are saying, and then, okay, who's responsible for that? What can be done? And the group can't just come to you with, here's what we want to see done. What this group should do, in my opinion, and I'm going to be listening a lot, but what this group can do is come back to y'all at some point. This commission's different than any other commission you have, in that this commission is appointed by the city council. All the other commissions are appointed by the mayor. This one is an animal of the city council. It's designed to bring people together for our city. And I look forward to helping in any way I can. Where do you start? At the beginning.
You do realize we're not paying you, right?
Sir?
We're not paying you. You were doing this for the...
It's a voluntary thing.
Okay. We got to get that right.
I understand.
Get it clear.
I'm well aware where the city is financially.
Where will y'all meet?
I have not heard. I'm sure it's going to be up to the committee. I mean, there are a number of city facilities around town. It's going to be whatever the mayor says, too, I would guess, right, Mayor? There you go.
All right.
I know everybody's excited about this. Yes, sir.
We're excited. Your time has expired. Thank you. We now need a vote. We now need a vote to make it official. All in favor? Those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Creel.
Thank you.
Do your job.
For the free.
All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent? Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Creel. Mr. Tisdale, you're up.
Okey-dokey. On item... On item E, this deals with the development consultant for the Community Development Block grant. And does this agreement include, I assume it does, it includes any substantial amendments that we make in program year '25? Would this, a head nod would be fine. Would that be accurate? Yes. Okay, thank you. That's all I have for item E. On item K, the 13 Solara Ballard Lights. This is Hurricane Zeta project, and that was, Hurricane Zeta was 2020? Is it, is this another example of dealing with FEMA? Here we are, five years later. If anybody wants to get close to a mic, just to answer, I'm just thinking, here we are five years later. I don't...
That's correct.
Okay. It's just the hoops you have to jump through, FEMA and MEMA, and up the chain and down the chain and everything. Okay, that's fine. So that's not on us. That's on dealing with FEMA. Then we look at item N, and this is mainly budget legal expenses related to the Propst Fair extension. These, all of these expenses, I think it's $64,000 and some change. That's all related to eminent domain matters, Peter.
That's right, and we're tracking those separately.
Right, okay.
Which will match the reimbursement.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then item W, excuse me, item W, this deals with next staff group and agreement with them to provide temporary employees. And it says that we're going to pay them for these employees at the city rate, to the city at a rate equal to 150% of the hourly wage paid to the employee. And I'm thinking, our hourly wage to employees with benefits is 140%. And I've raised this issue before, roughly 140%. So we're paying somebody 10% more.
No, we're paying them. We're paying, next staff is going to pay the employee.
Right.
Like $15 an hour, and we will reimburse next staff, I think it's like 22 something an hour. That's 140 or 150%. So we're still paying them, the employee will still make $15 an hour, which is the same rate that we pay.
Right.
It's just what we pay next.
No accrual of expenses, though, related to this temporary work.
But I mean, it's more expensive per employee to go through next staff than it is to hire staff? Is that accurate? No? Okay. Go ahead through that explanation.
But so also, this is just get us... There's all the insurance, the overhead, the benefit package, all that. But also, this is a means for, what we're doing with this group here is we're going to be getting temp employees in. This is specifically for our water sewer division. We're going to be getting temp employees in, bringing them under a temp service like this. One, we get them in a lot quicker, but two, we can kind of, for lack of a better words, try out employees through the temp service before we hire them on permanently. So it helps us really quickly fill these positions that we have open, because right now, I think we have like nine positions open in utilities. So it's going to get its employees quicker, and then it also allow us, give us time to fill those positions with these employees as we...
You got a greater capacity to perform, plus you can pick out specific skills that are needed.
That's right.
Okay, so it looks like we're moving towards contracted service.
No, we're not. No, that's not, these are only going to be temporary employees temporarily, for lack of a better word. Just until we can get all the spots and utilities filled.
Okay, all right. So it's temporary until you get those skilled positions, the jobs requiring those skilled positions.
Similar thing with grass, and some of those things we attacked in the last three months, I think, with contract.
Okay.
Yes.
That's good. I got it. Thank you. That's all I have, but Jamie may have a question.
Mr. Creel? What's the average time that that temporary, temporary employee before he becomes a permanent employee? But like, how long do we...
They have to work 600 hours under, as a temp employee, and that's through the temp agency. That's a temp agency requirement before they will, before they want us to hire them.
Okay, so we're on the hook for at least 600 hours with the temp agency?
No, no, no. If we get an employee and they're not working, we can call the temp agency and say, we don't want this employee back tomorrow, and they go away.
But if it's someone we like, we at least guarantee them 600 hours of pay before, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yes, correct, correct.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I'll reference to all of W. Yes, I'm trying to find, you just said it's the utilities department?
Yes. We already have one for grass cutters. We already have a contract in place that handles like streets and drainage, which is our grass cutters. And so this particular one we're using for our utilities, water and sewer crew members, who basically, they need to have a little bit higher skill. We're trying to get people that know how to lay pipe, or at least know how to, you know... know.
How many people we talking?
Right now, I think we have nine vacancies. So, but as we fill, we're not, we're gonna be.
Less contracted.
Less, yeah. As we fill positions, we're gonna have less temp people.
Okay, have you already budgeted? This is already, the man is already in the budget?
Yes. This is for what's already in the budget, correct. This is not anything additional to the budget.
Okay, all right.
This allows us to get the specific skills that we're looking for, and then, I hate to say it, but you kind of try before you buy basis.
Yeah, but then, too, you have a different capacity at different points of view, so you don't wanna carry that skillset over you, the whole year, if you're not needed the whole year.
Basically, it's a manual labor skillset we're looking for, and in a table interview, sitting across from somebody, it's hard to, it's hard to understand, can you really do this type of work? What this does, it lets us, give us kind of an interview period for 600 hours, so that we're getting good people in. One of the things we're having, we hire people as laborers, then they get in here and they can't do anything that they told us they could do. So, it's kind of trying to overcome some of that.
Got you. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Is it a discussion just for that one, or anything?
No. You have the floor.
Is it a discussion?
You're finished? You're all finished? You have the floor. Continue.
All right, you.
You.
The, how much is the monthly rent there? How much are they paying us?
Let me check with Rachel. This is the fuel dock.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can we repeat the specific question?
Yeah, the rent for that particular, for the, on the fuel dock? How much are they paying?
Well, that's kind of difficult. The total rent, it's divided, divided into three sections. Hours, one-third is not being paid. That's how the credit is occurring. So, if you want to know what the total is, including the credit, or the total that he's paying that is going to the state? Does that make sense?
No, ma'am. You're making out a little bit better.
Go through with the total, Rachel, go through the total rent, and then the breakdown of the rent.
Okay.
Assuming no credit.
Assuming no credit. So, in June 3, 2025, to June 29, 2026, total rent is $15,725.81. The city's share of that would be $5,241.94. But that amount is not being paid, because that is the credit for the improvements. So, your total that actually gets paid is $10,483.87. I know it's a complicated lease.
Now, what length of time was that? What length of time?
I was giving you one year, the current year.
So, the improvement that they did, they're paying for out of their pocket, we're giving them credit for, but we get to keep the, the increased value for us.
True. We keep the improvement that is being done. They paid for the improvement originally. It was to move fuel tanks and lines to where they are now. They've done a few other things, including extending that fuel dock here that makes it more possible to get to larger boats. So, we are including that as a credit to them, the $19,000 that they spent fixing that pier, because that's our pier. So, that will delay further how long it is until we actually have cash come in on this rent.
Okay. And what's the long term? What's the rental term? How many years?
First term is 25 years.
And how long have we been doing it?
2014.
The improvements that they're talking about, who approved those improvements ahead of time?
They were done through the port.
Hmm?
Through the port.
Okay. Do we have anything to do with the improvements, knowing what they're gonna be ahead of time?
On this particular one, no.
Anywhere possible from now on that we can do that? We know what's coming?
Yes.
Let me jump out there, too. As far as the proof, you know, the fuel distribution system, there was a lot of variables there with regard to calculate how much, the lines, how much was at the pump, and there were some significant fines if we did not execute those kinds of things, because it comes from, you know, possible leakage. So, I think those improvements needed to be done. And that was the source of pretty significant amount of that piping and stuff that handles, that goes below, you know, below the ground, and winds up in the boat. So, anyway, that's a big reason why the cost avoid a significant fine situation.
We're not questioning it. I'm not, I am not questioning the cost. I'm just saying, before I agree to pay for something, have the courtesy to tell me it's coming, and what you're gonna be charging me for. As a representative of the city, you know, that's what I'm asking. Don't just present as a bill, say, "This is what we spent. I have rental houses. If my tenant wanted to do something and get credit on the rent, just come and tell me ahead of time what it's gonna be, and then we'll go from there." That's all.
We have set up procedures for that going forward.
All right. Anyone else comments on the consent?
I got one.
All right. Mr. Nail?
On L and M, I wanted to table that.
Yeah.
I found a cheaper route.
Mr. Nail, you make a motion that you'd like to table?
I'd like to make a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Second by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion, any discussion from the administration? I'll start there.
Yeah, Councilman Nail has got with Ms. Johnson, and we're gonna work through that process as far as on these additional bids from there. And we'll also make sure that Mr. Director Lee is involved in that as well, too.
Very good.
So, we'll take care of those this week, and come back to you and be able to resolve that next week.
All right. Any other discussion, Mr. Nail, Mr. Tisdale?
Done.
Just in reference to.
Anyone else? Mr. Marshall?
In reference to his.
Yep.
I'm good with him. I do have some exceptions, too, but.
All right. Okay. Any discussion on this?
On nails?
Motion to table?
We look for businesses in Biloxi, so it's kind of hard to go outside of Biloxi and not support our own businesses. So, that's the hard part. I mean, if they can at least match, or we can get it cheaper, I mean, we should support our own businesses. That's all I have.
How long do you want to table it?
Two weeks.
One week?
I'll take that meeting.
Is that enough time? One week or two?
Two different.
Is that enough time? How much time you need?
Two weeks, November 4.
Two weeks, November 4. That, okay, Mr. Nail. All right, we're gonna table it until November 4 with no objections. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries to table it, those L and M.
Okay, I do have, if we're doing the tabling, I do have some things I want to bring up. I need to make a motion for that.
Okay. Mr. Marshall has some comments?
Okay. I want to table A, B, C, D, and E.
Hold on.
I seconded it.
Can you provide a little bit of background? May I ask, Mr. Marshall, the reason to table, so I can see?
It's in reference to the CDBG, and I'd like to have a, like to table it one week after we have a work section on it. So, workshop on it. So, whatever day we can set for the workshop, the next week we'll be doing it. And we have all the answers and all the questions that we have, we make clear decisions.
I'm a little out of order here, and I apologize. So, Mr. Marshall's making a motion to table, say again, A, B, C, and which one?
Making a motion to table A, B, C, D, and E.
D and E, okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there we go. Now, we can talk. I was a little bit out of order there, so, my apologies.
Okay. It still stands, we're working the CDBG. We, I would like to, first of all, I want to say that, you know, I'd like to be clear that anytime we're gonna bring up something about the CDBG, we know that's a topic that is of great concern. I'd like to have a phone call. I know you have an open-door policy over there, but we have one over here, too. A phone call, say, "Hey, this is what's coming up on the agenda, and let's just discuss it first." They won't get blindsided by it. The, I'd like to do a work section, a workshop on it, in order to get everything clear. It's been very confusing, and what is what, what's capable, what's not capable, and we're gonna do a workshop on it. So, we're gonna table it until one week after the workshop, so that when we do come to vote on something like this, it does get back on the agenda, all of us will be clear as to what the guidelines and rules are, and so it can be done in a clear and concise way.
Any comments from the administration? You good? Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I'm opposed to tabling A through E. I do not have any heartburn over having a workshop at some point here coming up on how to expend the CDBG in terms of, are we looking at substantial amendments, or things of that nature? So, that's where I am on these items, A through E. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Gray?
None.
Mr. Nail?
Nope.
Mr. Creel? One, I have, why should we, why should we table E? Why couldn't we go forward with E? I don't know how familiar everyone is with Grace Aaron, but other than Ms. Pickett, she's probably, has a skillset and a knowledge that really could help us if we kind of enter into, you know, that agreement with the contract with her. I'm just asking the question.
I have a problem with her, but I want to make sure that she's willing to do what we want her to do, based on what we're gonna be going forward with. She's not had these issues to deal with before. This is a whole new guideline, new set. So, we don't, we assume that, based on her past agreement, to carry this agreement over, we're gonna change amendments and things like that, substantial amendments, things like that. We need to make sure that she and I are on the same, we, we, her, we're all on the same page. So, let's just table it all. After the workshop, we can all sit here and make the right vote. We know that we're doing the right thing.
Okay. Appreciate the input. I all agree to table A through D, but I think it's important, I don't know how many of y'all know Grace Aaron, I just don't know, but I know she's worked many, many, many years, and her knowledge is invaluable, and I wouldn't want to hold that up. That's all. But I have no problem with A through D. Any other comments?
Yeah, but just regarding item E, Ms. Aaron knows the process and the application, the document, everything, inside and out, front to back. She's done it for a number of years, so I just wanted the new council members to be aware of that. Thank you.
We're not, none of us, no one is questioning her abilities, no one is questioning even the fact that we're gonna be doing business with her. We're not questioning that. We're simply saying that we're all gonna, there's nothing in the world beats our understanding. We know she's qualified. We are also changing, in the process of possibly changing the rules and the guidelines of her scope of work. We need to make sure that that is already included, okay, from her. If we need any adjustments to her agreement, then we need to be able to do that, and then come back on the time to vote. But we need to be clear, nothing beats an understanding. Is she capable? Yes, she's very much capable. We're gonna, unless she refuses to do business with us, we're gonna be doing business with her. We're already clear on that. It's just we table it until we can make sure that we all have a clear understanding, not on her capabilities, but what our scope of work is.
Okay. Council members, y'all in agreement with Mr. Marshall's comments, or any consideration for E? I'm just asking, since we're in discussion.
No, I agree with Ms. Marshall. I mean, it's not her quality of work, it's none of that. It's just, you know, he just wants to do a workshop and talk about everything. I mean, I see the harm in that.
Okay. There are no further discussion. We'll consider the amendment. What?
They want to take each of these items individually. I don't know.
Okay.
Well, we got a motion on the floor. So, we want to go back and withdraw it and go each one individually? But, I mean.
Are you okay, Mr. Marshall, if we vote on each one individually?
Well, I have a motion on the floor, and we're gonna vote.
You got a valid motion that's been duly seconded.
Okay, let's vote on it.
Okay.
Table it for how long?
Since we don't have a date for a workshop yet, do you want to?
Subject to call.
Subject to call.
Subject to call.
Okay. All right, so, let the record show that Mr. Marshall wants to table items A through E, subject to call. His comments are, his intent is to, after, one week after a workshop, revisit, take it off the table and revisit these items. Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
All right. Does that, anybody have any questions on that, what you're voting on? I'm just, I'm still having problems with E to support the entire, that's why I would like to do it individually, but that's okay. I think you got the votes. All right, so, all in favor, tabling items A through E? All in favor? All opposed? Four to two. It passes. All right. Anybody else on the consent have anything?
Yes, I want to talk about the Christmas on the avenue.
All right. Go ahead. You got the floor.
I think this is a great event. Nicole.
What item? What item were you discussing?
Um, what is it? Five? Five Z?
Z, okay. Item Z.
Nicole and her crew, her team has been working hard, trying to make this work. I think it's gonna be a great thing for the whole city, to give our youth something to do, get out, bring our kids, and hopefully, we can make this a yearly event. I think it's gonna be wonderful, and I can't wait to see how it all turns out, and hopefully, brings in plenty of revenue for the city. That's all I have.
All right. All right, we're gonna vote on the consent agenda. We've tabled some of the items. We'll vote on the consent, and then we'll take any exceptions from there as well. All in favor of the consent? All opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Gray, any exceptions?
H, G, and F.
H, G, and F, okay, Mr. Marshall?
H, G, F, and W.
Alright, Mr. Nail? Wait, hold on. H, G, and F, did you?
H, G, F, W.
And W. Mr. Nail?
F, G, and H.
F, G, and H, okay. Mr. Creel?
F and G.
F what?
F and G.
Alright, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes. F, G, H, and I.
Thank you, and I, and my exceptions are F and G. Did you get those? Alright. Yep. Move on to code enforcement. Code enforcement hearings, open it up.
Item A, Monolith Debt Strategies LLC, Zero Division Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, Monolith Debt Strategies LLC, 676 Division Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, TDM Properties LLC, 12700 Lorain Road, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of TDM Properties LLC, 12700 Lorain Road? Anyone here? This case is closed.
Item D, Tone B Hunn, 339 Kivett Street, that case has been resolved. Item E, Robert A. Mott and McElrock LLC, Zero Shortcut Road, this property's still in violation.
What? What's the violation on this one?
Overgrown, the, the picture doesn't show, but it's overgrown.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Robert A. Mott and Ms. Kelrock LLC, Zero Shortcut Road? There being no one, this case is closed?
Item F, Cricket Residential LP, 10071 Dodie Street, that case has been resolved. Item G, Loxicon LLC, 610 Howard Avenue, this property's still in violation. You'll recall that, uh, before the council granted the extension, that there were crab traps that were placed right up against the neighbor's property. The crab traps have been removed, the structures that were built have not been removed. So it hasn't been completely resolved. And, uh, we do have someone here that would like to speak on this.
On their behalf?
Uh, no, one of the, one of the neighbors.
Alright, uh, anyone else would like to speak on this property? Alright, come on up, and if you'd state your name and address, and you have the floor.
Marshall LaFleur, 609 Cop Street, Biloxi, Mississippi. I live behind this property. He did move the, uh, oyster traps, but he left some structure, he left a couple of, uh, rusting out old boat trailer, another boat trailer. But the main thing I'm here today for is because of the tree, it was supposed to be addressed. There is a dead tree on this man's property that seriously is going to ruin my house. I have written the man, I started writing him November of 2022. I had a tree surgeon out, he said, tree's dead, gotta go, it's gonna, I sleep under it. It's gonna kill me, if I'm asleep and a storm hits. I get nervous as anything. So, he's in violation for not only that, but also the tree. Code enforcement's been out, they've documented the tree. I've, I've already spoke on the oyster traps, but the tree wasn't addressed, so, Gary with Code Enforcement said, you need to go back and speak on the tree today. I have pictures in my phone, I have registered letters I've sent to the man. Nothing has been done, and I have to live under this. I've had the, the limbs trimmed, but the tree is leaning to where it will fall on my home.
Alright, I'm gonna ask a question, I'm, I'm a little familiar with this. If a resident has a dead tree, and you give them notice that you are aware that it's dead, and it can pose some threat to your property or, or, uh, health, doesn't that change the legality of it, or the obligation? I'm not an attorney, but.
But you'd like to be.
Yeah.
I know in the civil court, it's a, it's definitely a civil case, whether it's a, a city code, I, Jerry, I defer to Jerry if we have any specific ordinance saying, we go out and find dead trees. I don't think so.
Could this fall over any power lines, or damage any water? If it hit the ground too hard, any water or drainage systems, or anything like that? Alright.
I do think it's probably, it could be something in justice court, where it's just no attorneys, $80 filing fee, and, and I might suggest that.
Okay.
There's some pro bono advice there, you know, so.
Thank you.
Alright. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Loxicon LLC, 610 Howard Avenue? There being no one, this case is closed?
And the last case we have, item H, Richard F. Okonawoski, 307 Forest Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Alright. How'd you pronounce that last name again?
I crucified it, yes.
Alright.
I'm sure.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Richard Okonawoski? I, I got close to that. Come, come on up, come on up.
Jesus.
Go ahead and proceed, sir.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead and proceed.
Uh, so I'm sort of in a catch 22, because I have a no contact order to the, my property.
Okay, you have no contact order to your, the property's in your name, you have a no contact order to the resident?
Yes.
That is in the dwelling?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I did, uh, speak with the judge, and he gave me, uh, permission to go and do the bond. And, uh, I did go to try to do that before the, uh, the 7th. And, uh, my wife said she was gonna call the police, which would mean I would get incarcerated.
I don't know how to resolve that, sir. That's a civil matter you're involved in, it sounds like, and, uh, there is a violation that has to be cured, the property's in your name. I, I don't know what advice to give you, so, but it has to be cured, um, or we have to close this case.
So would, wouldn't she be responsible for the bond?
I can't advise on that. All right, I know there's a violation, the property is in your name, you're responsible for curing it. I don't have any advice on how you remedied that. I, there's no advice from this council to, to give you on that, unfortunately. So. Mayor? So I don't know if you heard, you heard the dialogue there?
Yes.
I mean, it has to be remedied, whether you're, you have the direct resources, or we do it, it gets billed back, and you eventually pay, uh, pay for the, uh, curing of the issue here. That's all I can, I can tell you.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, sir. This case is closed. I need a motion for the routine. Some, made by Mr. Tisdale, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, Mr. Tisdale? Anything? Mr. Creel?
Nothing further.
Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, give Mr. Walt, come up.
There you go.
Give us update, hopefully he's got some money for us.
Like George.
George, he's been talking.
No money for him.
Shame on you.
Yes, we received our, uh, 671,000, and we currently have another 673,000 that's in, uh, what I call step four or five, or what Mississippi Bema calls step four or five. We should have that here within the next six to seven days, so we're, um, we're doing well, and we're 60 days in advance.
Do we, uh, do we have any CBG, I mean, any, uh, capital project grants coming out? That you know of?
Not related to my work, no, sir. Uh, Christie or the mayor and the administration would have a better handle on that.
Right, right, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Walt, any other discussion? There being none, uh, called for the question, approve the routine, all in favor? Those opposed, motion carries, 6-0. Chair entertain a motion to recess?
Adjourn.
I'm sorry, adjourn?
I'll make the motion, uh, to adjourn in memory of Bernard Cuz, C-U-Z, Santa Ma.
Second.
Alright, thank you, seconded by Mr. Creel, any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? We're adjourned.